Studies Section 4: The Metaphysics of Thomas Aquinas. Introduction: Metaphysics is taken by Thomas Aquinas, like Aristotle, to be the study of being qua being, that is, a study of the most fundamental aspect of being that constitutes a being and without which it could not be. Aquinas’ metaphysical thought follows a modified, but generally Aristotelian view. For Aquinas, a thing cannot be unless it possesses an art of being, and the thing that possesses an art of being is thereby rendered an essence, a substance composite. If an essence has an art of being, the art of being is limited by that essence whose art it is. The essence in itself is the definition of a thing, and the paradigm instances of essence, assistance, composite, and material substances. In this study section, you will learn the unique nature of Aquinas’ metaphysics. The notions of substance and accident, form and matter, are to be appreciated as represented in Aquinas’ metaphysics. Learning Outcomes for Study Section 4: When you have studied this section, you should be able to: Explain the unique nature of Aquinas’ metaphysics; Discuss essence and assistance in Aquinas’ metaphysics; Briefly explain form and matter in Aquinas’ metaphysics; Explain the notions of substance and accident in Aquinas’ metaphysics. The Metaphysics of Thomas Aquinas: Saint Thomas Aquinas conceives metaphysics as the ultimate explanation of the mystery of being visible and invisible in the ultimate being, which is God. Whenever you mention the name of God, the idea of a transcendental being readily comes to your mind, and this transcendence is often characterized by timelessness, lack of spatiar, extension of location, utter simplicity, and independence. Meanwhile, you are also fond of making claims such as “God is good”, “God is wise”, “God loves everyone”, “God knows all things”, “God wears good for his creature”, “God acts in a just manner”, and so forth. All these statements ascribe properties and activities to God, and even describe him in anthropomorphic terms. The questions raised in this regard are: How can you talk about God as transcendent and God as a person without involving ourselves in contradiction? Two: In what sense do you use terms such as “knows”, “loves”, and “arts” for God? In predicating such terms about God, are you not involving yourself in contradiction? Since you have earlier agreed that the idea of God goes along with a being not in space and time, a being that is immutable or absolutely simple, can you actually say anything about God that will not involve any contradiction? The Language of God: The Predication by Analogy. In addressing the problem of the language of God, Aquinas realized that there is a being which is necessary, perfect, absolute, unchangeable, uncaused, unlimited, and the reality of all realities, while there is also a being which is contingent, limited, imperfect, caused in the process of becoming, and also depends throughout on the former. So, as a master in the art of distinction, Thomas tried to explain the sense in which he used the term “being for God”: who is the necessary being, and for its creatures, which are the contingent beings. He said that there are three kinds of predication: university, equivalency, analogous. A term is univocal when it is predicated of diverse things according to exactly the same concepts; a term is equivocal when it is predicated of diverse things according to an entirely different concept; a term is analogous if one and the same term or name is predicated of many according to concepts, which are not entirely different but agree in some common point. For Aquinas, the notion of being is not univocal because every being is unique and particular, neither is it an equivocal idea since it is not obtained by any kind of abstraction; rather, it is analogical inasmuch as God and creatures, the most dissimilar realities, agree in the fact that they are beings. In his Metaphysics of Participation, Aquinas opined that the difference between divine being and other being lies in the fact that the capacity of the latter, which is the participant, is finite, and so is perfection is inferior to that from which it participates. Their similarity lies in the fact that the former impresses its likeness in the latter as much as possible for their nature. As regards talking about God, Aquinas presented his theory of analogy, which says that you cannot apply words with their ordinary meaning to God without ending up in a fallacy or absurdity; there is, however, a special extended sense for these words which make possible meaningful assertions about God. This implies that, for Aquinas, when you say that God is good, the word “good” as used here is not the same as when you say that Augustine is good; neither are they completely different, but they are analogous, that is, partly the same and partly different. Likewise, if one says that God is wise and Peter is wise, God is said to be wise not in the sense in which it applies to Peter, but in the sense somehow related to this sense. So, following the principle of analogy, you take terms such as “God’s loves”, “sees”, “knows” to be used in a different but related sense when applied to creatures. Analogies of Thomas Aquinas: In his theory of analogy, he mentioned different types of analogy, which include: One: Analogia proportionalitatis, analogy of proportionality; Two: Analogia iniquitatis, analogy of inequality; Three: Analogia attributionus intrinsique, analogy of intrinsic attribution; Four: Analogia attributionis estricale, analogy of estricatic attribution; Five: Analogia entis, analogy of faith; Six: Analogia relationis, analogy of relation; Seven: Analogia operationis, analogy of operation. Aquinas Against Equivocal Predication: Aquinas’ predication by analogy was an attempt to refute the positions of other medieval scholars who had argued for the predication by equivocation in talking about God, for medieval philosophers like John Scutus, Erigema. For medieval philosophers like John Scutus, Erigema, words are predicated of God in a way totally different from the way they are predicated of man, that is, in an equivocal manner. Such that you say that God loves mankind, or that God is good, merciful, wise, just, forgiving, and so forth; you do not apply these qualities to God in a way similar when applied to creatures. So, God’s love is not the same as human love. For Erigema, God’s love is super-love, while for Sido Dionysius, it is super-essential love which transcends human love. The argument against the predication by equivocation in respect to speaking about God is that since you only know human love, and you don’t know what super-lover or super-essential love means, it shows that such statement is a pseudo-statement which tells us nothing since you do not know what God’s love is. So, equivocal predication is unapplicable for God’s language. Who saw God’s love as super-love? Erigema. Aquinas Against Univocal Predication: According to John Scutus, the notion of analogy presupposes university since one could not compare creatures with God unless one had a common concept of both. This shows that you are able to know God only by applying concepts drawn from us, and unless those concepts were common to us and God, then you would not be able to compare ourselves with a perfect God. Replaying to this, Aquinas opined that if words are predicated of God and human beings in a univocal manner, then God will be anthropomorphic since all our predicates are obtained through experience and are primarily used of limited or finite things. However, for our transcendent God to possess such qualities as self-assistance and omnipotence, it must be a significantly different kind of thing from anything within the scope of our experience. Therefore, univocal predication is not suitable for God’s language. Aquinas on Predication by Analogy: Aquinas opined that only analogical predication is for God’s language. However, a problem arises due to various types of analogy in Saint Thomas’ works. Your concern is to know the type of analogy being invoked in theological discourses. You can clearly identify three modes of analogy via: One: Analogy of attribution, in which the nature signified by the concept is intrinsically realized in the primary analogies and in the others intrinsically and virtually. Two: Analogy of proper proportionality, in which the nature signified by the concept is formally and intrinsically realized in each of analogies according to a proportional similarity. Three: Analogy of improper proportionality (metaphorical analogy), in which the nature signified by the term is realized formally and intrinsically in one of analogies and in the others intrinsically and virtually. Among these three modes of analogy, only that of attribution seems suitable for theological discourses, for it preserves the transcendence of God as well as the intelligibility of theological language. What did Aquinas believe is for God’s language? Aquinas believed only analogical predication is for God’s language. Essence and Assistance: In the course of his investigation, Saint Thomas realized that none of the being he was studying is pure, for their perfection is never all the perfection of being, which he understood to have a complete, total, and infinite perfection. He looked around and saw that the perfection of those beings is a restricted, limited, and falling perfection. Then, he asked: What is it in beings that limit perfection of being which they possess? After a deep thought, he realized that what limits the art of being, of finite being, is the essence, definition of essence. Essence is defined as that in which every being apart from the art of being itself actus essendi, that is, God has his being received and through which the being is restricted. As a matter of fact, essences of things are always limited capacities and are recipient which cannot contain the immense ocean of being. When viewed in a strict sense, essence is substance considered as being of a certain kind of species and being capable of receiving art of assistance. Having discovered the principle of limitation in finite being, Aquinas opined that finite being must be made up of two parts or elements, in which essence is one and the art of assistance is the other. How did Thomas arrive at this distinction? It is indeed known to us that there is a difference between what is and it is. To be means just to exist, but exist as what? Is it to exist as a cat today and then as a bird tomorrow? Since you know that whatever exists exists as one thing or the other, then what is, that is, essence makes whatever exists as this and that. According to Aquinas, what makes human being imperfect? Essence. The Metaphysical Conception of Being: In the verite, question one, article one, Aquinas declared the absolute primacy of being. He said that being is what the intellect conceives first as something most known and into which it resolves all conception. Saint Thomas defined being as the ultimate root and supreme cause of all things that which has an art of assistance. It is the reality of all realities, the actuality of all arts, the formality of all forms, the perfection of perfections. As regards finite beings, the presence of two logically distinct elements in finite being indicate that there must be an estricic cause that is responsible for their bonding to form a whole, and this agent must also have produced these two elements. This cause, according to Saint Thomas, is the supreme being in whom there is no distinction between essence and assistance, and whose essence is subsistent being itself. Thus, he is the sole and purest being; all other beings have their origin from him. He is the pleasantries of all perfection, and he produces other beings by means of creation, a means through which he communicates his goodness and through which other beings participate in his perfection. Transcendental Properties of Being: Saint Thomas declared that the fundamental properties of being are “unum, verum, and bonum”, which means that being is one, true, and good. In Summa Theology, 1A, question eleven, at one, he said that every being is one, and one does not add anything to being. It is only a negation of division, for one means undivided being, thus one is the same as being. In another part of Summa, 1A, question five, eight, six, he said that every being by the very fact that it is, it is true that it is what it is, goodness and being are really the same. Hierarchy of Being: In order to bring in his postulation on the assistance of angels, Saint Thomas re-examined the order of being that has already been stated before him. The hierarchy goes thus: A: the absolute being; B: the angels; C: the rational corporeal beings; D: the organic beings; E: the inanimate or inorganic beings; M: matter and form. A very cool definition of matter would be that it is the stuff out of which a thing is made, whereas form is signified by the organization that the matter takes. A common example used by Aquinas and his contemporaries for explaining matter and form was that of a statue. Consider a marble statue. The marble is the matter of the statue, whereas the shape signifies the form of the statue. The marble is the stuff out of which the statue is made, whereas the shape signifies the form that the artist decided to give to the statue. On a more metaphysical level, form is the principle whereby the matter has the particular structure that it has, and matter is simply that which stands to be structured in a certain way. It follows from this initial account that matter is a principle of potency in a thing, since if the matter is that which stands to be structured in a certain way, matter can be potentially an indefinite number of forms. Form, on the other hand, is not potentially one thing or another. Form as form is the kind of thing that it is and no other. On Aquinas’ account, there are certain levels of matter, form, composition. On one level, you can think of the matter of a statue as being the marble, whereas you can think of the shape of the statue as signifying the form. But on a different level, you can think of the marble as signifying the form and something more fundamental being the matter. For instance, before the marble was formed into the statue by the sculptor, it was a block of marble already with a certain form that made it marble. At this level, the marble cannot be the matter of the thing since it is being marble and not, say, granite is this form, thus there is a more fundamental level of materiality that admits of being formed in such a way that the end product is marble or granite. At a higher level, this formed matter stands as matter for the artist when it is constructing this statue. If you think of matter as without any form, you come to the notion of prime matter, and this is a type of matter that is totally uniformed purely materiality itself. Prime matter is the ultimate subject of form and indefinable in itself. You can only understand prime matter through thinking of matter as wholly devoid of form. As wholly devoid of form, prime matter is neither a substance nor any of the other categories of being. Prime matter as pure potency cannot in fact express any concrete mode of being since as pure potency it does not exist except as potency, thus prime matter is not a thing actually existing, since it has no principle of art rendering it actually existing. Matter can be considered in two senses as shown in the figure below: Matter designated and designated. Designated matter is a type of matter to which one can point and of which one can make use. It is the matter that you see around us. Designated matter is what individuates some form. As noted, the form of a thing is the principle of its material organization. A thing’s form then can apply to many different things insofar as those things are all organized in the same way. And designated matter is a type of matter that you simply consider through the use of our reason. It is the abstracted notion of matter. For instance, the actual flesh and bones that make up an individual man are instances of designated matter, whereas the notions of flesh and bones are abstracted notions of certain types of matter, and these are taken to enter into the definition of man as such. The form then can be said to be universal since it remains the same but is predicated over different things, as signifying the actual matter that is organized in the thing. Designated matter individuate the form to this or that particular thing, thereby ensuring individuals, Socrates, Plato, Aristotle, of the same form. Man. Kinds of Forms: Given that form is the principle of organization of a thing’s matter, or the thing’s intelligible nature, form can be of two kinds. On the one hand, form can be substantial, organizing the matter into the kind of thing that the substance is. On the other hand, form can be accidental, organizing some part of an already constituted substance. You can come to a greater understanding of substantial and accident form if you consider their relation to matter. Substantial form always informs prime matter, and in doing so, it brings a new substance into existence. Accidental form simply informs an already existing substance, an already existing composite of substantial form and prime matter, and in doing so, it simply modifies some substance. Given that substantial form always informs prime matter, there can be only one substantial form of a thing, for if substantial form informs prime matter, any other form that may accrue to a thing is posterior to it and simply informs an already constituted substance, which is the role of accidental form. Thus, there can only be one substantial form of a thing. As stated above, essence is the definable nature of the thing that exists. A thing’s essence then is its definition. It follows that, on Thomas’ account, the essence of a thing is the composition of its matter and form, where matter here is taken as an designated matter. Contrary to contemporary theories of essence, Aquinas does not, strictly speaking, take essence to be what is essential to the thing in question, where the latter is determined by a thing possessing some property or set of properties in all possible worlds. In the latter context, the essence of a thing comprises its essential properties, properties that are true of it in all possible worlds, but this is surely not Aquinas’ view. For Aquinas, the essence of a thing is not the conglomeration of those properties that it would possess in all possible worlds, but the composition of matter and form. On a possible world’s view of essence, the essence of a thing could not signify the matter, form, composite, as it is in this actual world, since such a composite could be different in some possible world and therefore not uniform across all possible worlds. Thus, Aquinas does not adopt a possible world’s view of essence. He envisages the essence of a thing as a definition or quidity of the thing existing in this world, not as it would exist in all possible worlds. While substantial forms always dash, accidental form informs dash. Substantial form always informs prime matter, accidental form informs an already existing substance. Substance and Accident: Within Aquinas’ metaphysical framework, substances can be both material (cats, dogs, humans) and immaterial (angels). But as noted earlier, the paradigm instances of substances are material substances, and the latter are composite of matter and form. A material substance is neither its matter alone nor its form alone, since matter and form are always said to be of some individual and never in themselves. It follows then that material substances are part, and the immediate question arises as to whether or not the parts of substances are themselves substances. In order to address this issue, you must ask two questions: One: While they are part of a substance, are such parts themselves substances? Two: Are the parts of a substance themselves things that can assist without the substance of which they are part? Concerning one, you may say that while they are part of a substance, such parts cannot be substances. This is so given the definition of substance outlined above, that whose nature it is to assist, not in some subject. Given that the parts of a substance are in fact part of a substance, it is their nature to assist in some subject of which they are a part. Consequently, the parts of a substance cannot themselves be substances. Concerning two, the case is somewhat different. Now, you must consider whether or not the parts of a substance can exist without the substance of which they are part, that is, after the dissolution of the substance of which they are part, do the parts become substances in themselves? The parts of a substance receive their identity through being the part of the substance whose part they are. Thus, the flesh and bone of a human being are flesh and bones precisely because they are parts of a human being. When the human being dies, the flesh and bone are no longer flesh and bone, except equivocally speaking, because they are no longer part of a human substance. Rather, the flesh and bone cease to function as flesh and bone and begin to decompose, in which case they are not themselves substances. However, on Aquinas’ view, the element out of which a substance is made can indeed subsist beyond the dissolution of the substance. Thus, while the elements are part of the substance, they are not as part of a substance, substances in themselves, but when the substance deserves, the element will remain as independent substances in their own right. Thus, in the case of the dissolution of the human being, while the flesh and bone no longer remain but decompose, the element that played a role in the formation of the substance remain. In more contemporary terms, you could say that before they go to make up the bodily substances, you see in the world atoms as substances in themselves, but when united in a certain form... but when united in a certain form, they go to make cats, dogs, humans, and cease to be independent substances in themselves. When the cat or dog or human perishes, its flesh and bones perish with it, but its atoms regain their substantial nature and they remain as substances in themselves. So, a substance can have its part, and for as long as those parts are parts of a substance, those parts are not substances in themselves, but when the substance decomposes, those parts can be considered as substances in themselves so long as they are capable of subsisting in themselves. In all, for Aquinas, substances are what are primarily said to exist, and so substances are what have assistance but yet are not identical with assistance. Aquinas' ontology then is comprised primarily of substances, and all change is either a change of one substance into another substance or a modification of an already existing substance. Given that essence is that which is said to possess assistance but is not identical to assistance, substances are essence-assistance composite. Their assistance is not guaranteed by what they are. They simply have assistance as limited by their essence. Can the part of a substance be referred to as a substance? The parts of a substance cannot themselves be substances. Summary of Study Section Four. In Study Section Four, you have learned that: One, the metaphysics of Thomas Aquinas was based along the lines of his position regarding the proper language of speaking about God, which is the predication by analogy, the conception of being, as well as the transcendental properties of being, matter-form composite, where it's shown that matter represented potency actualized by form, and the substance-accident distinction. Two, for Aquinas, substances are primarily what exist, and that all change is either change of one substance into another or a modification of an already existing substance. This is the end of Study Section Four. Thanks for listening.